Josh, are you okay with us?
Okay.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Bartholomew Consolidated School Corporation's School Board on this evening, Monday, September 28, 2020. We're here at the Admin Building for those of you who are joining us possibly online. Thank you for joining us as well. We begin every session with reflections shared by one of our school board members tonight, Mr. James Persinger will be sharing. James?
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. It's been quite a year so far. I think we can all agree to that. It's been nothing short of an emotional and mental roller coaster for the vast majority of us between coronavirus resulting economic and unemployment downturn, civil unrest, response to, you know, the systemic racism that's rooted in the culture of policing at all levels throughout the country. It's really been hard to find and focus on something positive, really hard. But if we shift our view from the macro to the more local micro level, I can see several positives among our community and more specifically, our BCSE community. Given all the challenges that have been thrown our way over the last several months, I can honestly say that the determination and tenacity that our teachers and administration has shown gives me real hope for the future. It's not any secret that I've had my own personal reservations and objections about the safety of opening school on time at the beginning of the school year. I've expressed my concerns on multiple occasions and in multiple discussions with everybody. It hasn't been perfect, and there are still several ways and areas that we can improve. But looking at where we are in comparison to where we started, I have overwhelming positive feelings. As we move forward into the future, I hope we continue to keep a sharp focus on our corporation's mission and vision statements, and most importantly, keep at the forefront of all of our decisions, the health and safety of our most valued stakeholders, our students and teachers.
Thanks, James. An encouraging word is always appreciated and needed. Thank you.
And usually surprising for me.
You can be a protagonist, that's all. That's good. If you're able, would you join me and stand as we have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Five of our board members are in attendance this evening, so that does constitute a quorum. So I'll call this meeting to order. I would note that our mission, BCSE mission, vision, and high expectation objectives are listed on the placards behind us, and we'll continue to use those as we enter into the decision-making processes we have tonight. With that, I will promptly gavel out, and we will have a public hearing that Mr. Phillips will take us through on both the 2021 budget and a 2020 additional appropriation.
Good evening. So we will go through the, looks like the budget one first. This will be an abbreviated version of similar PowerPoint that you all saw two weeks ago, but this is the opportunity for the public then to interact and ask questions or make public comment. Just note that this public notice was posted on September 9, at least 10 days prior to the hearing, to inform the public of this, of this hearing. And you can see if, if you can see how small it is down there. The total amount of the budget that we're advertising is $126,383,411, which matches the same number on the slide there. What you will notice is that there is a difference in this slide and the slide that, similar slide that you saw last week. Inadvertently, this included the money that was transferred from operations to education in both budgets, both the education budget and the operations budget. That has since been removed and corrected, and as you can see, the amount that was, that was publicized and advertised on the Gateway Public Access website matches now what this, what this states. And so the overall budget is, is up just under 8%, when you include the operating referendum budget of just under $7.5 million. These education fund revenue assumptions have just been updated based on the questions that you all had two weeks ago. And hopefully, it's more clear, the funding sources, the September estimate for ADM. Actually, the numbers that we have this morning, this is actually a cabinet report that's later on, but it's certainly relevant in this slide, so I'll just share it at this time. We actually expect to be up about 30 students as opposed to down students this year. So based on the count that we had last week, that process, as you know, takes about three weeks to resolve conflicts with other school corporations when we both claim the same student ID number. But at this point in time, we don't expect it to move a great deal, and so we're pleased that that number will be, will be up. The number of students that we have that are CVP students or virtual students enrolled now on ADM that were also virtual students last year is actually 40. These are the assumptions that were used, the numbers on the screen were the assumptions that were used to build the revenue estimates for the budget, but our actual number is 40. And we did expect that to go down with, with graduates and students coming and going. So in, in February of this year, we still think there'll be a significant number of students that are on our virtual pathway, but we don't yet know how the state legislature is going to handle funding those students. And then even next year, going into the fall of next year, that ADM, of course, is 50% of next year's revenue from the state perspective. And so right now, our estimates are that there'll be about 500 students still virtual next fall. And again, unsure what the, the state is going to do from a funding perspective in this coming legislative session. The expenditure assumptions that I showed you last time have not changed. Those remain the same. I will note, I did, you know, the, the net, the net reduction in certified staff of 13 for this fall, that action was taken certainly at the beginning and in the middle of the summer pandemic season for us. And at that point in time, we still had no idea whether or not the state was going to levy the same cuts to the budget to, to schools that were made to other entities across the state, other tax-supported departments across the state. And so it was certainly a prudent move at the time, but we have, we have built into this budget the ability to at least bring back half of those teachers next fall. Again, that depends on ADM, but that is budgeted for next fall to bring back many of those, those staff cuts.
What's that absolute number?
Currently, 420, sorry, 720. Currently, 726.
The absolute, when you bring back half, how many people is that you're bringing back in your assumption?
Six, 726.
All right.
The education fund budget is, the same has not changed from the, from when it was shared with you earlier, but I did do some, some math for you. Last time I shared with you that a lot of those changes in the communications, supplies, and property and equipment lines just moved things around, but I just added those up for you. In 2020, the total for those three categories there was 1.92 million. In '21, it's 1.96. So while the amounts, if you follow the lines across, certainly changed a lot, the total is just up a, you know, less than half a percent, just like the total overall education fund budget, just under, just under half a percent. And again, we'd like to point out what, you know, what makes up the majority of that budget. 97% of the education fund budget is made up by salaries and benefits. So the education fund budget is just over $80, $80 million for the first time, significant milestone there. The operations fund assumptions also remain unchanged from the last presentation you saw two weeks ago. We do expect the overall levy for that to be up 4.2%, and the DLGF to approve that, minus the pension bond offset, of course. And the assessed value up just a little bit less than that. So the operations fund advertised tax rate will go up just a tad bit as the levy went up more than what the assessed value did. That means the rate will tick up just a little bit. On the capital projects side, the biggest change here is, of course, the addition of about $2.1 million in, in building improvement budgets that we haven't been able to do for the last two years. And so we're excited about that, able to do that because we transferred the bus purchases to the bond, the 2020 GEO bond, also had lower tax cap losses than what was expected. And then, of course, the levy I showed you on the previous slide, you know, 4.2% increase in the levy was certainly helpful in that. Other than that, the CPF budget remains largely unchanged.
Chad, what, what salaries and benefits qualify to fall under the capital projects budgets?
Good question. That is almost all technology and custodial skilled trades are plumber, electrician, HVAC. But the majority of, I think the majority of it is probably actually technology.
Okay.
On the transportation side, really the only change to this budget is the, the fact that those buses moved from, the bus purchases moved from the transportation budget into that bond. Other than that, just increases on the salary and benefit side. The transfers from the education fund, again, these are expenditures that have been established in the old general fund and supported by state revenues that now the state says you have to expend those on the operations side. You have to spend those from the operations side, and the state allows you to transfer a certain amount of state revenue from the education fund to the operations fund to support that. And these are those expenditures that come from the education fund. Again, include most things like utilities, some administrative costs, and lots of custodial And so the operations fund down there, up a total of 2.7% over the previous year's budget. And here's the breakdown of those expenditures that move from operations to education. Interestingly, and I don't think the legislature knew this when they were thinking about it, they didn't really think about this, and it made, it makes the whole process complicated, which is why that appeared in two places on the previous, on the previous presentation two weeks ago. But we actually, many districts have found that much of their technology fund, this is entirely technology right here, much of their technology fund that was always funded through the operations side, the old CPF side, those are actually educational expenditures. Those people work in the building, supporting teachers and students, and so a good portion of money each year will also transfer from operations to education. And so the net of those two amounts is about $6.5 million, which is just over 8.1% of the education fund budget, well under the 15% threshold that the state sets for that. The bus replacement plan, a little bit different this year. We're, of course, going to replace more buses than we have for, for a long time, or at least since I've been around. But we'll be replacing eight of those 11 buses from the education, sorry, the, the GEO bonds, the 2020 GEO bonds that you just passed, and then the other three from the operating referendum fund, using the, the safety and security portion of the operating referendum fund that I'll get to here in just a second.
So Chad, does the, does the sustainability of that concern you at all, the fact that we're, we're using bond, bonded money to, to go buy those assets?
Not as long as AV continues to support it. So as long as assessed value continues to support it without raising that tax rate, it's, it's actually a more stable way to do that because we have the tax cap losses attacking that operations fund each year. And if we ever need to move those things back, we can just reduce those CPF projects that we built into it this year, like we had the, the prior two years.
Right, okay.
But, but everyone that I know of, all of my colleagues around the state are really trying to figure out how to address tax cap losses.
Yeah.
And this is one of the ways we've chosen to do so.
That's helpful to know that's where your thinking is, okay.
And it's also, we'll get to the pension bond offset here. That payment comes off this year, or next year. In 2021, we make the final payment there, so it's about $320,000 of those back into the operations fund. And here's that debt service presentation. I did add in there for you just that, that one-year tech bond, last year's capital purchase bond that you, that you approved, that was paid off this year and replaced by the, the next one that you just approved two months ago. And so the debt service payment up again 7.41%. And again, just a reminder, our goal, and, and the way that we can do this is because we're taking those cash operating balances in the debt funds and, and lowering down, them down to that new 15% threshold that the state passed on all new debt. So you used to be able to keep 50% of the next year's payments in an operating fund. All new debt, you can only keep 15%. So we have to draw down those amounts as time goes on. So it's a way we can improve, we can increase our spending there without affecting the tax rate, without raising people's taxes. And there's that pension debt payment for next year, the very last one that we make. And so that, in, in next year's budget presentation for 2022, we will not have to reduce the operations fund by that $300,000 like we have for the last 20 years or so. This is the high school building 2010 referendum debt fund, making payments on that, and that is largely unchanged and will be so for the, for the remainder of the payments through And so the overall debt funds proportion of the budget up just under 5%. And then here's that refere, refere, operating referendum fund that the taxpayers approved back in June. And, and hopefully, these numbers down at the bottom look very familiar to you because these are the exact numbers to the dollar that we've been talking about for a good year and a half now. And so the $5.3 million going to teacher salaries and salary-related benefits, and about $1.5 million to $2 increase, $2 an hour increases for bus drivers and $1 for all other permanent support staff, and then our safety and security expenditures there. This line right here being those three buses, the, the property and equipment line, $400,000 being those three additional buses. And so there's the operating referendum fund there in the overall budget. This, again, I did not change this slide from last time. I'll have, after the end of September, when we close out this month, next month, when I do your, your third quarter update, I should have some better predictions on cash balances to end of the year. But at this point, I still project them to be flat over the beginning of the year. And here is the, the big difference in this presentation over last week's, or two weeks ago's presentation. The advertised tax rate that we have right now is just over $1.25, and that is just about where we predicted. Now, the DLGF will reduce that. I told you that they'll, they'll take that $300,000 pension bond payment and reduce that. And then one of the, or resolutions that you all will approve next month gives me the authorization to reduce the, any of the budgets in order to achieve a tax rate that we're aiming for. And of course, during the referendum, we spoke, spoke often about our desire to keep that around the dollar to dollar one mark, and we fully expect, expect to be able to do that on the final tax rate. That does include the 15.6 cent operating referendum rate in that. And so next steps is all that you have next, next month is approval and adoption of the budget.
Can you go back a step?
Sure.
On slide?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so with the 15.6 cent increase due to the referendum, then you're actually projecting the rest of the tax rate to be lower than 2020 as the advertised rate. We don't know the final yet. But I mean, if I just take the 15.6 off of that $1.259, you're under the 90 cents that you projected last year.
Well, last year's actual rate is here in the second column.
I see, I see that, but every year, the, the final rate's lower than the advertised.
Right, good question. What I expect and has, I expect this trend to continue. If you notice, you know, we used to project the, the tax rate and advertise a tax rate that was 30% higher than the actual adopted.
Yeah, like the top of the, you're talking about the top of the charting, yeah.
Yeah. This year, I don't expect it to be more than, than one or two cents. It's just, everything has gotten much more predictable in the budget process than it was just five years ago. You don't have to artificially inflate some of your budgets to make sure you don't miss out on, on getting the maximum levy. And so each year, we've been able to get more precise with that. And so I do expect it to be around the 16 cents more than last year's, right between a dollar and a dollar one at the end.
Yeah, I think in that 2006 to 17 era, that was why we asked Vaughn Silver to wear a wizard hat. He did it well.
Right, right.
Have a wand and everything, yeah. Okay.
And so that's the, that's the end of the presentation, Mr. Caldwell.
Let's see if there are questions. Anyone has questions on that section right now because, before you go over to the other? Anyone have questions?
Since it is a public hearing, it can also be, questions can ask, be asked from those attending.
I, I would note that, that it sounds like what you're projecting for next school year, I think you said next school year, was to recover six of the 12 that we had, and the other six that we would still hold and reserve, just generously, is something under $400,000, probably in salary and benefits. I mean, we, I don't want to make $400,000 seem like not a lot of money. It is a lot of money, but I, I think, you know, that's a place we ought to press ourselves to as quickly as possible get back to full staffing rather than, if there's a place where I think we should, should stick our necks out a little bit, if we had to find it somewhere else in our budgets, you do have room to move between your two funds. You still have additional flexibility there, and that additional $400,000, you know, it's, it's surprising to me how impactful just six more teachers can be, you know, in terms of balancing. And I know Teresa always fights hard just to keep us fully staffed anyway, so planning for that. I would just encourage Dr. Roberts' administration, if you've got anywhere where you would push that front, push, push on getting to full, back to full staffing ASAP, given, given the good news from the legislature that, that, that at least, and from our ADM, that we're, we're going to have an additional set of funding, looks like, so. And then on, on this, when you assume that the, in your budget assumptions for '21, '22, 500 students on, on CVP that are funded at 85%, so I can't do that math in my head really well. Is that $400,000 or is that 4 million? Did I drop a zero? That's $400,000.
$400,000.
That you lose there, right?
Somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah, in that ballpark. Is, what's, for CVP versus in-person, what's the student-teacher ratio? I mean, when we had 80 or 50 to 80 per year, we probably had one person, two people doing, monitoring that?
Oh, so, so like last year when we did not have?
Yeah, when we did CVP.
It was pretty much Angie Winneke, I think, monitoring.
Yeah.
All the students we had up to the 80, and the ratio right now is closer to 50 to 1, something like that.
So we've got about 10, 10 teachers, we got about 10 teachers doing just CVP, not including bridge?
Five for elementary.
Five teachers doing CVP.
For elementary, and then?
Including you. At the elementary level. But, but you, but you're not all 500 students, right?
No.
Are you half?
Okay, you're at 1.74.
Okay, okay. So it's not dramatically different.
In terms of that ratio, if we figure, no, no.
That's interesting. I'm, I'm surprised that our student-teacher ratio is, is that close to our in-person student-teacher ratio. Is that?
Let me back away from that. Then in, in terms of in-person being probably an average of 23, 24, 25, at least with CVP, much higher than that, 50 or more, Bill is indicating it's higher, at least for the secondary level, so probably double or, or more of what's in the, and then of our bridge students or just secondary, it varies greatly. The elementary has gotten it down to about 35 to 1 for bridge.
Coming back after Paul, we're at 1.57. A lot of your teachers.
Okay, so 50, yeah, 50.
Right on top of this, 50 to 1, make sure, all right. All right. Other questions, anyone? Want to talk about the 2020 bond?
Sure. I, I think you technically have to gavel out of this hearing and then start, start a new public hearing.
If there are no other questions, then we'll gavel out of the, out of the budget hearing and, and gavel into your appropriation hearing for the 2020 additional appropriation.
Thank you. So this also required a public notice was published on September 16, and this is just anytime we're going to spend more dollars than what the board appropriated last fall, we require your approval. Last fall, we did not have the full debt payment scheduled for that 2019 GEO bond, and that came in later at $37,000 higher than what, than what we had passed for a budget. And so this is just a public hearing to. And so this is just a public hearing to advertise that just more than $37,000 increase in the debt service budget for 2020.
Okay. Thank you. Board members or anyone in attendance here this evening, are there any comments or questions on that additional appropriation? Hearing none, I think. We've met that requirement. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. So we'll gavel back into our regularly scheduled meeting. Dr. Roberts, we have you on the agenda tonight for another just how things are going with our reopening.
Yeah, I think last time I said I had to be brief, and I wasn't so brief, so I'll try to be briefer this particular time. Before I jump into the reopening plan update, just to summarize the public hearings from Chad's perspective, the one in regards to the budget, as he indicated there, the budget adoption hopefully will occur on October the 19th. Our next school board meeting, the second item on the appropriation, is on your agendas tonight for approval under recommendations. So with the reopening plan update, we we talked about ADM a little bit the last time. A reminder that Friday, September the 18th was our count date, official count date for the state of Indiana. And Chad did provide, Mr. Phillips provided some information in regards to that. So some pleasant news is that it does appear, as we reconcile our students with potentially somebody else maybe claiming the same student ID, that we will have an increase in student numbers this year. And it seems that that at least partially responsible for that increase would be students coming from other districts and taking advantage of some of our remote options, given that we had a couple of choices for people to make. Mask compliance, just an updated set of numbers for that and asking our buildings to check on mask compliance. Again, our elementary percentage averaged at 96.3%, secondary 95.1. Both of those slight increases, secondary was at 95 even the last time, elementary, I believe, was at 95.4. That puts our overall rate at 96.1%. We have one special note, a bullet point that's on the screen, is since our last school board meeting, we talked about some of the challenges we saw with compliance in some cases with simply the mask being a little too big for some of our students. And so it might be falling below their nose on a regular basis. And so we had some entities within our community reach out to us and say, hey, if that's a problem, we can get some masks for you. So we are having some help and making sure we have proper-sized masks for even our smallest kids. Additionally, just in regards to the metrics that are there, the numbers that you see, that data is gathered from a combination of things, from unannounced visits into classrooms, other observations in other places, spaces within the buildings, input from teachers, surveys that were sent out, asking for input in what what staff members were seeing, and then even discipline referrals and counting referrals to the office if if a student was sent down because they were being noncompliant and maybe noncompliant a little too often. So those were different ways that we ended up getting that information and in balancing that out, you see the percent mask compliance that we have there. From a physical distancing standpoint, just want to always throw this in front of you because it is continues to be our challenge, most challenging mitigation strategy. We've had continued dialogue with the Columbus Educators Association, I think, since our last meeting. We probably between three subgroups have had a combination of seven, eight, nine meetings based upon that that subgroup total, three different subgroups, and probably the smallest number of meetings of one of them was maybe two, and the largest number of meetings is approaching four or five. So quite a few opportunities to at least talk about how we can address this this problem or challenge. I I do make the note here, the challenges will persist as we add students back to in-person instruction. So as we come back from fall break, we did send surveys out to parents slash students who are participating in our remote options regarding their plans following fall break. And a part of our efforts to make sure and address the challenges of in-person and remote teaching that many of our teachers are involved in, as well as take a look at our physical distancing challenges, was to limit the flexibility or remove, actually, the flexibility of students and parents to go back and forth too easily among the options we have. It is certainly something we talked about on July 20th in our reopening plan rollout and continue to talk about as we got through the month of August. But that is is definitely a challenge as we have students coming and going sometimes, it seems like on a daily basis. So we are removing that flexibility, asking for a commitment, and when that with that commitment, getting a lot of students actually back into the classroom, 20, 25% based upon the building levels that you have. And so that will change our classroom numbers as we head to things after fall break. The note I have there, over 600 elementary students are returning to in-person learning.
Just elementary.
Just elementary. So that number at one time was around 1,600 students. And bridge, for example, is down to about 1,029. That's off the top of my head, but that's that's what we're looking at. So 1,029 still in bridge, but means 600 back in our buildings. And then at the secondary level, Bill and his team working on where people are. So they have phone calls and other follow-ups happening this week to narrow that down. But in in the numbers that I saw this morning, anywhere from from 17, 18 to 23% of students coming back from bridge in those cases. So we'll have, again, more people in our buildings as we return and and efforts to be made to to try to address that. We'll have to eat up that square footage in each of our building as buildings as creatively as as possible. The in-person versus remote instruction piece, I I referenced that. So as we've been working on just that challenge and recognizing the the amount of additional amounts of time that teachers are having to spend, you do have as an approval item tonight, a resolution for stipends that is under my recommendations for approval. Additionally, as I've just said, we have a reduction of flexibility for students to transfer back and forth. We know that following fall break, with reducing that flexibility and getting commitment and knowing at least where people are going to be, that we are going to be able to move to only in-person or remote. Again, this is only elementary that I'm talking about as we continue to wrestle with some of the complexities of secondary teaching and and just scheduling. But that will be the case for elementary. And then we're continuing to investigate ways to assist teachers with this challenge as we continue to work with our teachers association and our administrators. So making some headway in regards to that, but still work to be done as we get into fall break and come back out of it. I always try to update you on the metrics since they were a key part of our plan. So we have continued to to go back and forth with the greens and yellows for now over a month, coming out of into going into Labor Day weekend and coming out of it, we were getting into the the green. And so shortly after that, 12th of September, the per capita rate got back up to yellow for a little bit and then dropped back into the green by the 19th, so just a week later. And here we are, basically a week after that. And then we're back to yellow with a 5.1 and a 5.6 this weekend. So just as a reminder, the most up-to-date data we always have is a day behind. So today's the 28th. You'll see the September the 27th being listed there. So right now, the percent positive rate, and we're always about four days lagging with that, is is under 4%. Test turnaround time continues to be at 2.9. We'd like to see that improve a little bit. It does. It does challenge us when it comes close contact time, when you're waiting to find out if somebody is is positive. And then COVID hospitalizations are are remaining very low over the weekend, two and a one posted. So that's our local data. And that data, this data is what is on the community's COVID-19 task force as of 5 o'clock PM today, the the task force website. The ISDH releases information on Wednesdays. So that information came out on the last week. I guess that's the result as as of the 20th. And we are 0.5. If you're not sure exactly where we are, we are immediately to the left of the 1, kind of in southeastern Indiana there. So there is a 1, Decatur County had creeped up to that number, so they were in the yellow. But most counties in the state of Indiana, at least right now, in the blue. We are in that kind of interesting timeframe that we're watching closely. And as we saw, yellow is that, you know, Labor Day weekend was about three weeks ago. And as as we came out of that, I think September the 7th was the Monday of Labor Day weekend. So we are three weeks removed from that, and we'll see if what impact maybe Labor Day weekend had on on numbers as we move forward. So interesting that a yellow started to occur this weekend, as I mentioned, that we're three weeks out from Labor Day weekend right now. So we'll we'll keep keep an eye on that information. Just a reminder, in terms of our flow chart, that red, yellow, green is our spread, and we work with the local community, medical professionals and otherwise, to to look at substantial spread. And then we we base our instructional model upon that. And then in terms of internally, so we went with the local metrics, the the state metrics, and then here at BCSE, and we have been providing this information to you as a board and also to the media each Friday. And we had, at the end of the day, on Monday, the 10th, we had 25 positive test cases. 16 of those were students, nine staff members, that's a combination of teachers and support staff. Only six of the 16 positive student cases have actually been in a school building. And then 395 total close contacts now due to both internal and the majority being external positive cases. So that is information as we have it right now with reopening.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts.
You're welcome.
Board members, any questions?
Is there any particular reason why the test turnaround time is trending up over the last three or four weeks?
It's a great question, James. We've not been able to get a substantial or significant answer from from local professionals. Kelly, anything that's been brought up recently in your dialogue? So we, you know, it was a 2.7, went to 2.3, went back up to 2.7, now it's inch back up to 2.9. So still in the green, at least the way we have this here, but the the trend is not good to be ticking up that way. And as I indicated, the challenge with that is if we have a a student who, you know, went homesick, and they get a test a couple of days, maybe after going home sick, and then we're still waiting another three or four days before we get a positive, we haven't done any close contact tracing to get those students or staff members out of the building until that that test gets back. So it is a is a key piece for us.
I was very concerned in considering flu season's coming up quickly.
Yes.
I mean, that's going to compound that issue.
It is, indeed, indeed. I do want to comment, I want to thank Mr. Persinger on his comments this morning or this morning, before the meeting this evening, in regards to school, certainly challenges, many things going on, but certainly credit to our our staff members, our teachers, our support staff, and our administrators for getting us to where we are now as we continue to work and tweak things and address and realize those challenges we've had. There are a lot of positives that are happening in our school corporation as we continue to move move forward.
Kelly, we we don't have data, do we, on on like in in years past, normal absenteeisms from flu season, colds, things like that, do we? I I've heard anecdotally from a couple of teachers that they're not, they're not having kids already, you know, the the normal spike when everybody comes back and shares germs, and they're not seeing that. Are you hearing that across the schools? That's I was thought it's going to be an interesting side effect is that we may have one of our best attendance rates for those that are coming in person in a long time because everybody's got one of these on, right?
Yeah. The the one thing that just might hurt our attendance rate a little bit is when we do send a kid home, they're they're staying home for a number of days.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because we have quarantines of of 10 school days, 14 days when you had the weekends or
That's a good point, yeah.
Or a kid goes home with a sore throat, might have to stay home for 10 days as we work through the process. So that's going to exaggerate some things a little bit just because of of those those circumstances, but
High rate numbers, too. Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Julie.
First of all, I'd like to agree with Jeff's, Mr. Caldwell's, comment about bringing our teachers and staff back as much as we can. So thanks for bringing that up. Secondly, when we do get the commitment, you're talking about remote, in-person, does that, maybe I missed this, does that mean CVP or in-person, and bridge will no longer be an option, or how's that?
Yeah, good question, Julie, because that that is a that is combined with our efforts with this. So first thing we tried to do in the middle of this semester was just reduce that flex or remove that flexibility of going back and forth.
Okay.
And maintain still both options. So bridge and CVP still in place. In terms of commitment, yes. So coming out of fall break, we know where if a student's going to be in-person, in bridge or CVP, and there for the remainder of the semester, that's the commitment we're looking for in all three options. As we go forward, we would like to reduce those two options to one and 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 get students to get into one of those two. Now, I think I mentioned this in the last meeting, but we do realize that that answer of which option is best based upon grade level may be different. So it may be likely that the remote option for elementary students would be bridge, and the remote option for secondary students would be CVP. So as we're working on that to see what that might be and and hurrying toward a solution there, I don't know that that can occur by second semester or not as we balance everything out, but that is a piece of the the puzzle.
Okay. And and as we bring those students back who want to come back for the remainder of the semester, right, then we're looking at, we were talking about teacher and student ratios. So what is, what is an ideal teacher-student ratio in elementary versus secondary?
That's probably based upon who you ask. As small as possible would be the the typical answer. I I don't know. I mean, a lot of people will, if 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 there's a policy number, we're not going to set policy on this because you have to stick to it, to throw out, you know, 25 is kind of that that number that you try to keep classes below that if you can. And that isn't always the case. So there will be classes of more than 25 in our school corporation. But as we, I'll use the elementary example specifically here because we do have all the 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 numbers back right now as we head into fall break. So as we balance the remote options and get teachers assigned just to remote, and we get then some teachers back from remote, because as we reduce that that number of students that were in remote to in-person, we can take teachers that were doing remote only and now put them back into the classroom. So even with that movement and using the spaces we have, we're at about 23 to 1 in terms of an average. I think we have some class, some buildings averaging 24 to 1, but the average over the 11 elementary schools is still going to be at 23. Now, with physical distancing and in some of our classrooms, that's that's still not the easiest to do, but we have a lot of classrooms before having kids come back that were at 23 as well. So it because of the teachers we're getting back from the remote learning and putting back into the classroom, they're helping keep those ratios at least still manageable with physical distancing and moving forward.
Okay. And I have one more question.
Sure.
You talked about the stipends for the teachers who are doing this double work, and you're still in conversations with the CEA about that, about the amounts, and how much will go out? Is that what you?
It is. So so the resolution that's on the table for tonight is an intent.
Okay.
It's for you to give us the the ability to move ahead with that, looking at a January payout of a stipend. And that's after the criteria for earning the stipend is set and then the actual dollar amount in terms of per person. So we've established a pool of money that we can take from our budget and use for this purpose. And now we'll find out how many teachers would actually fit into that. And the reason is is that, you know, again, we're entering week eight right now, and there may be a teacher who now can step away from doing both and just back to one or the other, whereas other teachers will be doing it maybe for the entire semester. We're trying to to also address that. But if that's the case, then what is that final pool of people that we would say, all right, that that was a semester's worth of in-person versus in-person and remote learning, here's a certain stipend that we would give?
Okay, thank you.
So the first nine weeks, we were about, I I kept hearing 8,200 in in-person and 3,200 in in virtual or or one one form or other, the virtual. What are you projecting that's going to be then in second, second nine weeks?
So we're inching toward 9,000 back in the buildings and still 2,200.
All right.
And they're rough numbers, Mr. Caldwell, but but around around that.
I know we don't have the finals yet.
Yeah.
Okay. That's a big change.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Roberts.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions, board members, we'll move on. No one signed in for the public comment section tonight, so we'll move on to board commendations. I think you had one, Dr. Shad.
I do. I wanted to offer commendations to the corporation, but to particularly, oops, sorry, highlight the work of Brenni Coomer. She's our coordinator of instructional technology and wrote a grant that we've received for almost $100,000 from the Indiana Department of Education. It is our digital learning capacity building grant, and it will allow us to create a program called Growing Educators Through Micro-Credentling, referred to as JAM. So yay.
Thank you for sharing that, Dr. Shad. Thanks to Brenni and Nick and the IT group for putting that together and providing additional ways for our our staff to develop in in their use of technology, instructional technology.
Board members, do you have other commendations?
I would share one with you. Must be Nick and his team's night. But Brian Trivett from our IT department, along with Marie Gregory, took advantage of Homeland Security Flag, some additional dollars available for our free and reduced lunch population. And this was kind of above and beyond. I don't think they, this was work that was in their job description, but they saw the opportunity, they were the right folks, probably in our team, to do it. And it ended up resulting in about $200,000 more available
And it ended up resulting in about $200,000 more available funds for our free and reduced lunch population here this year. So that's terrific work that really will help both the corporation cover the costs of the services and the meals that we're providing and the families that need those. So thanks, thanks especially to Brian and Marie. And I don't know, Nick, if I missed anybody else in that group that helped out with that, but thank you.
Thanks for mentioning that, Mr. Caldwell. That was one of those very quick things turnaround time wise. I think we got the notice on a Monday night and said that, by the way, this is going to be due on Wednesday.
Yeah.
And so to make sure we count every student, we relied on Brian and his team to, and Marie to get that done, and they pulled together. So appreciate their hard work on that.
That's super. School board member, do you have any reports this evening from your other committees or groups? Julie?
I have two.
Thank you.
The first one is from Diversity Council, which met on September 16th. And just as a reminder, the Diversity Council mission is to ensure that no BCSE student's success or failure is ever determined by any part of his or her identity. And we had a, during our meeting, Charles Edwards, we haven't met since February 19th, basically. We hadn't gotten together. So our very first opportunity to get together, we had what Charles called a temperature check. So we were able to go around the room, see how everybody was doing, and we really shared some great feelings. Some people, you know, we just opened up and said, here's how I'm feeling about COVID, here's how I'm feeling about just everything that's going on in the world today. And so props to Mr. Edwards and his leading of this, of this Diversity Council. And then Kim Easton gave some updates on some of the other committees that are meeting or that are getting ready to meet. And then we went over some upcoming community events that were going on, Council for Youth Development, some other workshops and things like that. So that was the Diversity Council. Hold on, I have to find this other. And the other one was the BCSF. Let me find it. Let's see, hold on, sorry. There we go. Okay. So the Bartholomew Consolidated School Foundation has announced a new partnership with Donors Choose. Donors Choose was founded in 2000 by a high school teacher in the Bronx. Donors Choose empowers public school teachers from across the country to request materials for their classrooms. This partnership is designed to provide teachers in BCSE with broad-based support for supplies and classroom projects. BCSF has contributed an initial $25,000 toward a dollar-for-dollar match for projects with a total cost of $1,000 or less. In the first two days of this matching partnership, three grants were fully funded in BCSE, one each at Clifton Creek Elementary, Busy Bees and Southside Elementary. Donations have come from local donors as well as donors from Pennsylvania, Texas and Arizona. We are looking forward to seeing BCSF's impact grow exponentially with this partnership. And information can be found on BCSF's Facebook page, but the website for Donors Choose is www.donorschoose.org. And it's a very easy website. I visited it and it's really nice. So that, I wanted to announce that for the foundation.
I'll add to that, Dr. Bills, that if you go to that website and just type in your zip code or even type in our name of our school corporation, any grant that falls within that zip code will pop up. So you'll be able to easily see the grant requests that are there and choose to donate. And as Dr. Bills said, if you donate a dollar, the foundation's donating a dollar. So it reduces the ask by half of what's needed.
Excellent. Thank you for representing us on both of those committees. Dr. Bills? James?
Yeah, just real quick, I had the honor this morning to participate in the ISBA Delegate Assembly. And although I can't go into details because it's not officially released yet, just in reference to the budget that we were talking about earlier, one of the top priorities for the legislative session that we voted on consists of 100% ADM funding for virtual education participation, even if it's more than 50% utilized. So, but that is only for the upcoming school year because obviously you'd have to renew it every year, but that is their top priority that they listed, that we voted on. So that was good to hear.
Good. Thank you, thank you for representing us on that. I appreciate you stepping up and doing that for us this year.
Problem is, it was interesting.
No, not me.
Okay. There are no other reports. We have at least one cabinet report this evening on preliminary ADM. Mr. Phillips?
Just to bring you, bring you up to date on where we stand today with ADM, the count today would be 11,309 students, 40 of whom are virtual students from a, from a funding perspective, which is, which is what I pay attention to, of course. The interesting thing, and I know a few of you got an email, but the, the class that we saw the greatest decline in is the one we fully expected to be, which was kindergarten. Large number of families just deciding to wait a year or even skip kindergarten and enroll their students in, in first grade next year. As I dug into it, I just looked back at prior kindergarten years and only three times in the last 20 years have we seen a decline of 2% or more in our kindergarten classes. The first time is the class of 2020, which is the children that were born after 9/11. The second time are our current fourth graders who were the, the children that would have been born following the Great Recession. And now this one with the, what we're calling the COVID recession eventually. But it was just interesting to see that. That's where our greatest loss was in that, in kindergarten. Had we had a normal enrollment in kindergarten this year, we would be, we'd be somewhere up in the neighborhood of plus 75 students this year, which is certainly bucking the trend of what many of my colleagues are experiencing across the state. So good news on an ADM standpoint.
So the 11,305?
309.
309 is, compares with what was our number last year?
It's up 25, 25 or 30 from last year. Still down from the prior fall.
Right.
Because we did lose 60, 60-plus last year.
Okay.
But certainly, certainly good news.
And you said had we had what we would have considered a normal kindergarten class, it would have been up almost 100?
Well over 70 up, yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any questions for Chad? Let's move to item four on our agenda. Dr. Roberts, you've got items 4A through N that you're requesting approval on. Do you want to take us through those?
I'm sure what my record for number of requests for approval is, but it just may be approaching it.
It's approaching it.
Way down the letter N. Those first five always the same. But my requests for approval include minutes of the public hearing meeting that was held on September 10th, which was the kickstart to the ability or opportunity to collectively bargain. Also, the minutes of the regular school board meeting on September the 14th. We also have a list of supplemental contracts for you. We always have field trips, professional leaves and school fundraisers on here. No requests specifically for those this particular time. We did have a set of claims from dated September 28th, that's a little over half a million dollars. And then a set of payroll claims from September 11th, that was about 2.4 million dollars. Additionally, this is the second reading for policy 2266, a new policy, which is nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities, which is Title IX. That was a federally directed situation. As changes were made, we needed to change our policy to align with that. Additionally, we have a request for the budgets for Title I Part A, Title II Part A, Title III and Title IV. We also have a new service agreement with a new benefits broker slash consultant that is being recommended by our health trust. We have a 2020 additional appropriation resolution. That's the resolution that comes out of tonight's second public hearing. We have a resolution to change the number of teacher days for 2020, 21. That is in regard to the number of teacher, it says teacher days, the number of days that we dedicate specifically for teachers, not instruction. So this year, when we added a time to the beginning of the school year, took the start date from August 6th to August 10th, made sure that our teachers had three paid days to prepare for that, on the calendar is two and a half. And so we just had them stay for the extra half day on a Friday, paid for that extra half day. Because we changed two and a half to three, we need to have you approve a resolution to change that number of days from two and a half to three. And then there's a resolution of the intent to pay the teacher stipends that I reviewed earlier. So those are the many ones that I have. Let's see.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, I'm just making sure. It looks like I have an extra piece there. Yep. Okay, go ahead.
So board members, is there a motion to approve items 4A through N on the table?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Persinger, is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. What questions, if any, do you have for Dr. Roberts or any of his staff on these items?
Dr. Roberts, on the second reading of the nondiscrimination, can you explain to me the, how that works? So we have a second reading and the next time, will there be a, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, so our policy indicates that a revised or new policy would go through two readings. So first reading was on September the 14th, and tonight is the second reading. So actually, your approval to tonight, if you so choose, would make this policy.
Makes it policy, Julie, if we agree on it tonight.
Okay, so what I see in front of me that you sent that we were?
Twenty-one pages of it, yep.
There's some green and there's some, so the green are the changes?
Those are the changes, right.
Okay. Just like last time, you had some green, but there's been some changes since then, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, thank you. So there, the, we had a few words added based on Mr. Munro's recommendation on just making sure the definitions for sexual offenses align with both federal and Indiana code. So slight changes there. And then Dr. Shad caught a blank where we had not put a number of days that we allowed people to respond back to and we'd given them the, the information about the decision, and it's five. And I think that's the top of page 18, if I recall the pages. But, so those, those tweaks were in the policy.
And it's still the 90 days that you have to have.
Still that timeline within, within 90 days. Dr. Shad did make a nice, helpful observation, I think at the beginning of the meeting tonight, that that policy looks this long. It's still going to be long, but it's going to be shorter if we take out all the editing notes and the options that were in there that we cross out and so forth.
Right.
Yes, it will be reduced.
Thanks for raising that, Dr. Bills. That's, my question is along those lines. Chris, you've, you've had a chance to look at that. You're, you're good with the changes that were made, okay?
We used Chris's direct language.
Right, right. And did we include the definition of consent?
Yes.
In there as well?
Yeah.
And does anybody want to grill Dr. Pleak on the R4 title request tonight?
I already sent her notes and got answers.
I got copied on some of those. Those were very helpful. Thank you, Gina.
Yeah, I think that was something we talked about and did appreciate Gina's kind of one pager. I think Title I went to two pages or more, but pretty much was able to scale that down to be readable and understandable.
I would share with the other board members, I swapped a couple of notes with Mr. Phillips and I think I copied James on those as our health trust representative, just this, this service broker, the expectations, these fees I think will be higher than we've been paying. But Chad and, and James and the rest of the health trust feel fairly confident that we'll more than make those up in savings on some of our expenses that we've been incurring with that, so.
Because of those questions, Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Phillips did put a, he did put a slide into tonight's presentation just to address some of those questions that have been asked.
Thank you, Chad. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of items, approving items 4A through N as presented by Dr. Roberts, please indicate by raising your hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Ms. Heine, you have some human resources recommendations.
I do, thank you. I'm requesting approval of the human resource recommendations as presented this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the recommendations made by Ms. Heine?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Shad. Any, any questions for Ms. Heine? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion also carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Heine.
Thank you.
Board members, other items for this evening. Dr. Bills, anything from you? Mr. Persinger? Okay. Mr. Bryant? Dr. Shad?
I, I'll just add, I do appreciate, because we've been getting lots of emails. I appreciate the work that everyone is doing to respond. I appreciate the flexibility that we've had, and it is very cool that James said positive stuff tonight. But I appreciate that, that we are learning from it. And I aspire that second nine weeks is going to be much, well, more calm perhaps, we'll say, as long as everybody's really healthy and smart during fall break. So I just appreciate the work that we're all doing and that we're all listening. And we're listening openly versus meaningfully. So I, I do enjoy that work. And I hope everybody has a great fall break. People have worked really hard. There's a significant number of our administrative team that I don't think took the summer off. And I'm sure we have a good number of teachers that didn't as well. So they do, everyone deserves fall break. So do enjoy it and be safe.
Thank you, Dr. Shad. Dr. Roberts?
Nothing more to add. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. I would echo Dr. Shad's points. I, I wish we could go faster with being better at our alternate modalities of providing education, especially the bridge. I think we've been learning on the fly. I keep reminding myself, we're seven weeks in. We've been doing it, we, the program we thought was going to be a temporary stopgap. Because do you guys remember April? We really thought by this time in the year, this would be way behind us, I think. And we were just starting to get a hint that, nah, maybe not. And, and so I think, I think the teaching staff, all the folks involved with delivering the bridge education plan are to be commended for, for hard work. I, I feel bad continuing to ask people to be patient, but it's really seven weeks. It really is just seven weeks we've done. And I, like Dr. Shad said, I'm convinced that the second nine weeks will be incredibly better and more successful at the work that we do than the first nine weeks was. And yes, 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 please, if you can, take a down week, fall break and relax and even if you just sit quietly and sleep a little.
Dr. Caldwell, or Mr. Caldwell, I should add, because I get to hear about all the school corporations in the state of Indiana and where my student teachers are or are not. We have done a fabulous job serving kids. There are way too many school corporations that have not and didn't prioritize kids over all kinds of other stuff. So I'm very proud that that was important to us in all of our decision-making and our chaos and requests for flexibility. It was always about the kids. So I do appreciate that, and I see it compared to certainly corporations our size.
Thanks, Dr. Shad.
Thank you.
Our next, a reminder, our next school board meeting is on October 19th. So we have about three weeks from tonight. And we will have a fall break in between now and then. So please, everyone, in that time away, if you're traveling, travel safely. If you're just staying here, please relax and get some downtime. If there's no other business for this board, this meeting is adjourned.